It's about 6:20 now, and I will call to order the Marion Township Planning Commission for September 11, 2023. Initial activities take the roll. McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks is not here. Commissioner Scales.
Here.
Commissioner Curtis.
Here.
Commissioner Shrewsbury.
Here.
Commissioner Richards.
Here.
I hear has indicated she would not be in attendance, as has the Chair, Mr. Blumer. And I'm here. We have six members in a quorum. We have Senior Planner Shorty. Oh, there he is.
Why do you need to tell the office?
All the people are moved back in now.
Oh, it's a little different here. I mean, what? There are no triggers?
The meeting is in session.
Your meeting is in session. Come on and sit down, Mr. Brooks. You're now present.
I'm sorry. My bad.
First item on the agenda, number three, after the roll call, is public remarks. I see no members of the public. We'll go around to item four, approval of the agenda. Have a proposed agenda? Do I have a motion to approve it as presented?
Second motion.
I approve the agenda.
Second motion?
We have lots of approvals. First was...
Who's the second?
I second the Commissioner Scales' informal motion. Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Scales moved to approve the agenda as presented, and Commissioner McConnell supported. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Six zero. Next, we have approval of the minutes. Let's take these one by one. The first is the minutes of August 14, 2023. We're motion to approve the minutes of August 14, 2023 as proposed.
I move to approve the minutes of the August 14, 2023 meeting as presented.
Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Support for Mr. Scales' motion by Commissioner McConnell. Any discussion on the August 14 minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of August 14, 2023 as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are six zero approval. Now, the minutes of August 28, 2023. Again, I need a motion to approve the minutes as presented for August 28, 2023.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second?
Motion from, okay, Mr. Brooks, approved by Commissioner Curtis. Commissioners, all of us. Any discussion? Yes.
This is a minor thing. I don't know if it matters to Senior Planner Shorty, but a number 12 project updates. I think you were very careful not to be specific about Specialty Grocer.
Yes.
And the name is there, so I don't want there to be an implication that you had done something.
I'm glad you caught that.
Does that change? All those in favor of approving the minutes of August 28, 2023, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is six zero approval of the minutes. Now, we're going to...
I have, I'm sorry, one more?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, never mind. Sorry. Nope, I'm good.
Mr. Chair.
Just can't count.
Yes.
The minutes should probably be reflected. Commissioner Brooks is with us now.
Yeah, I did indicate that Mr. Brooks was present.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, we're seven.
Seven. Seven oh, yes. My numbers are off. Both, all motions are going to approve. Seven, sir.
That's correct.
Thank you. No exceptions? We have none in this package. Have we received any?
From Shorty. We have not.
Okay. The next, public hearings on the RRC ordinance. Remember, it's through the phone. Shorty, and give us some summary of what we're looking at.
The ordinance updates that you've previously seen. This is simply the public hearing for this because it is a zoning text amendment. It does require a public hearing. It's been properly noticed. Just very quickly to review, this would eliminate minimum house size. This would allow multiple family re-units by right in multiple-family zoning districts. This would allow second-floor residential units in the corridor improvement authority area. Not multiple-family developments, just second-floor where you have already commercial development. This would create a process to allow accessory dwelling units in single-family residentially-zoned areas. And staff is recommending the removal of the public hearing requirement for site plans. It's, and I can get into detail on why that, and I think we had that discussion a little bit before. You do have an attached ordinance. Again, you have seen this. It describes the changes. This, the Township Board has seen these and referred it to the Planning Commission for Action. And ultimately, as always, you can recommend approval as written, approval of a revised version, or recommend denial. And we will provide a resolution at a former meeting, or future meeting, excuse me.
Are there questions for Planner Shorty?
One quick note. This was, this was noticed. I haven't received any comment from the public, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Comments? Questions? Could you go over the rationale behind removal of the public hearing requirement for site plans?
Sure. So, in the public hearing process that you're familiar with, there's a 300-foot notification, and it's in the newspaper, and, and, you know, it's televised, and it's in this big public forum. This, the public hearing, I don't even like using the word "public hearing," but that is the phrase that appears in the zoning ordinance vis-à-vis the site plan, site plan review. The site plan review process is an administrative process. So, an example, recently, you did the SUP for Grand Reserve. That was a public hearing. We had some people come in and comment. That was a vote. It went through you guys, and it was publicized. We're in site plan review now. So, you guys, because that's administrative, that's now out of your hands. It's in our hands. So, we have a site plan public meeting requirement in our zoning ordinance that requires us to send notices, not 300-foot out, but adjacent property owners. And very often, we get no interest from the public because by that point, like I said, it's an administrative process. The other difference is Michigan Planning Code is pretty explicit in saying, if the site plan meets our requirements, we shall approve. So, there's really not, it's, there's really not as much leeway or give or take at that point in the process during the site plan review as there is earlier during the PUD or the SUP process when you guys are hearing it the first time.
Thank you. That's more for the benefit of the public than the board.
Sure. Sure.
In addition to what has been hearing, there are other places where the public can weigh in on this if there's a request for a zoning variance and some things like that at the ZBA or whatever. Those are public hearings. Those are available, and those are noticed.
Absolutely. This doesn't change anything related to any other notice requirements in our ordinance.
So, your review of the site plan is to make sure it meets the requirements under the zoning codes as far as setbacks, any variance given by the ZBA, and make sure that it does comply with our ordinance as published?
Correct. I'll also note, too, that we do make use of our township website. We do need to do a slightly better job of this. We do get PDFs of our site plans up on our website. And people are welcome to call with comments on things that they see there. And I do occasionally receive phone calls from, through that process. But again, by the time it gets to site plan, there's a lot less discretionary action that can be taken at that point.
And do you, when you hold these quote-unquote hearings, frequently have no attendance other than the planning and the applicant?
Frequently. I will not say always. The biggest attendance, hands down, the biggest attendance I've had, when Village of Okemos went through their latest MUPUD approval, when they had the site plan, I had this room ring a table, you know, in a ring, and I had quite a few people here asking questions. But again, nothing changed in the site plan based on those comments because you just don't have the discretionary authority to do anything at that point. Other than that, we, one or two interested people, curious, people who just want to know, hey, what's this look like? What's it mean for me? Where are you going to put the utilities? That kind of thing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Yes. Mr. Shrewsbury.
Talking about site plan, just a quick question about the appeal section 2B. There's an aggrieved person may appeal. Is that the applicant, or is that anybody who is aggrieved?
That's anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's an appeal process.
Okay. If they didn't think that you should have approved it, Joe Blow from the public would have the right to come in and file an appeal on the decision.
Sure. Sure.
And then, I think there's just a little typo with an extra comma. I know it's somewhere in there. There's after, that's on, I think, section A1.
Section A1?
Yes. I don't think there should be a comma after departments on that last line. Or else there shouldn't be the word "and."
I'm sorry. Section, what section?
I'm sorry, section two in that same...
Section two, A1.
A1, yeah, two A1.
Okay.
That last line.
Oh, I see what you're saying. In the comments of other departments, agencies, and state and federal statutes. Okay.
That's, then I had a question on the second part. Should I hold that until we get to that, or?
No, I haven't seen anything else. I just started with that one, so.
Just a really quick question on the accessory dwelling units.
Sure, sure.
There's a section here where you say second option. And I was wondering if you needed us to discuss that, or if that's something you're still working on. Can we find it?
No, that's a discussion. Director Schmidt put that in there. And as explained, I think previously, and explained to me, that is a place where there's, it can go either way. So, you're talking about owner occupancy requirement. What we don't want to see is the ADUs being, like, the house leased out in the ADU leased-out situation. One or the other's got to be the principal resident. And so, the second option there, it's basically determining, how do you determine who the president, the residence status? And if you guys liked it better, we could use, are they receiving principal residence tax exemption? You know, the homestead, you know, i.e. So, that is a discussionary item. But if you guys don't really mind, the preferred verbiage is just what you see there.
In response to the tax question, I think that may be confusing for people who may use a residence someplace else in the state. Is there principal residence for the school tax rather than this one in this area? So...
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah, I think one, maybe another option is, in order to make sure that we don't have multiple rental units on there, is only one rental license per property.
Site.
Or per site, you know, in terms of, now, if that's possible, and maybe the one site. But I think what, the problem with the residency situation is you have somebody who's been five months in Florida, claims Michigan residence, and then rents it out for five months. And so, you know, I guess, just having the requirement that the person resides there, I think it's going to be a problem any way you look at it when you talk about residents. We all, some of us know about people claiming to live one place and for voting purposes and live someplace else. And, you know, it's, it's kind of a can of worms. But I guess my thought would be what, to have the attorneys weigh in to see what is the most enforceable, the highest likelihood that we can enforce what we're trying to set up here. Because I think it's, either, any option probably has some way that somebody could probably work around it. But I guess all we can do is the best we can do. And I guess the idea here is, the, at least in my book, it's not so much, you know, this property, but it's the other folks that are going to be impacted by it who are residing next to it, behind it, across the street from it. And I think we just want to put as many safeguards in there as we can.
Sure. We'll take a look at that rental license. I, I think that's, it sounds, it sounds interesting to me, frankly.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yeah, I agree with everything Commissioner Richards has said. I think in addition to asking the attorneys to look at it, I would certainly ask my code enforcement officer, how would you figure this one? And if there is a requirement like a homestead, that you can fall back on, great, if it works. I also had a question about another aspect. If we're done with that?
I have a question on this piece of it still, if I could add. Going down to the architectural design.
Yes.
Where it says, any entrance for an ADU shall not face the road unless the entrance existed prior for the structure. What about something like this that goes on a corner lot that, for which that may be difficult? Would that be a zoning variance? Like, or is that not allowed?
They would have to request a variance. This is, this is in the zoning ordinance. And I note that this does not say entrance should not face the front, you know, the front yard. It says face the road. So, in a corner lot, I would interpret this as saying you have two roads.
Right.
Correct.
So, it may not be an issue. I mean, it might be a very random case that somebody wants to do this, and they're in a situation. And I guess, if there's a reason that this is, is there a reason that this is there? Or what is the reason that this is there? Because that might make sense that somebody should get a variance if they want to do this in a corner lot. But I just, I didn't understand sort of the rationale for including that in there.
So, someone said, you know, minimize impact on neighbors. This goes to that.
Got it.
You know? An already-existing entrance. So, back in the day when I owned a house, one of the things that I inherited was, was pretty obviously an ADU, and it was an attached one. It was in the upstairs. It was a big bedroom. It had its own bathroom. It had its own kitchen. It had its own, you know, it was, it was, and it was a mother-in-law suite in the house. That entrance clearly faced the road, but it was an already-existing because it was part of the house. What this ordinance says is, you can't do that and then build a new entrance. That would be noticeable.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner McConnell.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't have ready references to give you, but a couple of different places, both in the proposed and in the existing ordinance. The term manufactured home comes up in different contexts. And I think there's actually a definition that involves a chassis and something. Thinking about what people might do to construct an accessory dwelling unit could easily be something that's manufactured off-site. You could meet certain criteria for manufacturing or assembled on-site. So, it's just a matter of making sure that the current proposal is kind of clear on what is a...
Section one is the definition for an accessory dwelling unit. The second, the last sentence says, a manufactured home is not considered an ADU.
Right. And our current definition of manufactured home, I believe, requires it to be movable. It's on the chassis. You can put it on wheels and roll it someplace. Whereas, other manufactured homes don't have that characteristic. But they're still manufactured off-site and brought and assembled.
Regardless, though, a manufactured home is not going to be an ADU under this ordinance.
Right. And that's what I'm questioning. Is that what we really intend here?
Yes. What?
I understand that's what the document intends.
And then, so also by our ordinance, a manufactured home has to be brought in, put on a permanent foundation, and hooked up to utilities. So, and utilities brought to it. Under this ordinance, you're talking, you can't, like, it has to connect up to the house. Like, if it's a detached ADU, it has to hook up to the house's utilities, but you can't run new line to the ADU. There is a semantic difference.
What a yurt count?
I don't think that would meet the building code.
If, if a yurt-like building couldn't meet the building code, like, it was an ADU?
You do have to have a habitable structure.
What about a tiny house?
That's...
Yeah.
So, as, so under this ordinance, yeah, that make, that is more along the lines. A tiny house is not a manufactured house. You are building a stick structure at that point. You are putting it on a foundation. If you can get it on the sewer water or, and/or, you know, the utility on the house, it make, and it becomes standalone. And then, you got to meet setbacks and all the other requirements, zoning requirements for it.
If, if...
I mean, that's why we're having this discussion. If you have, over, over the, over the manufactured housing thing, we can talk about that. I'm just telling you what the ordinance says right now. I don't, that tiny house doesn't, I don't think we have a problem with a tiny house. I think we have a, but this is, but people don't want to look in their backyard and see...
Well, but I'm asking that question in relation to what Commissioner McConnell's saying, though. And, and I could see a tiny house being brought in, and then it would be manufactured elsewhere, and then just plop down somewhere.
So, you're thinking of a tiny house that on, like, the type that's on wheels? Because there are, there are stick-built on foundation tiny houses.
But then, I'm just thinking, like, you, I mean, you can put anything on wheels technically. But like, you, you can buy tiny houses far away and then have them shipped somewhere, and then put on a concrete slab. And so, that'd still be manufactured.
That is not under, I see what you're, I see what you're saying, but that's not the definition of a manufactured home as part of our zoning ordinance. It's a, it's a stick-built structure.
Okay. Well, that's what, isn't that what you were asking, though? What's the definition of a manufactured home? And how does that relate to ideas?
Right. And I, if the public is going to read the new ordinance, and they're going to get directed to our definition of a manufactured home and realize it's got to meet those criteria, then that's fine. It just seems unnecessarily disinviting to somebody who's thinking along those...
What do you mean? They're not, here we go. That's what I'm looking for.
If I was thinking of doing it, and I read an ordinance that says no manufactured homes, I wouldn't even apply for a permit. Right? I'm just, I'd say, no. If I take the time to go and read the formal definition, so, well, what I want to build doesn't meet that prohibition, then I'm okay. You just get nerds who can read township ordinances who'll apply for permits. Or maybe it becomes common knowledge in buildings.
So, manufactured house is a dwelling constructed in accordance with applicable town codes, transportable in one or more sections, built on a chassis and designed to be used with or without a permanent foundation. That's not a tiny house. It might be built in section, but you're bringing it in in sections, in section. It's not being put on a chassis and wheeled in.
Maybe my underlying point is that our current code gives an old defin, old title to a thing. And we're manufacturing lots of homes these days. And let's not be tied to that thing. Let's maybe think about whether we should have that definition of manufactured home that's being excluded in many cases from, right? I mean, if, when I look at tiny homes, people try to sell me kits.
Correct.
That's, that's a manufactured home. I buy the kits.
Not by this definition of manufactured home.
Sorry, that's my, that's my semantic.
I, I, I get it. You...
I think Commissioner Scales had it.
Yes, Commissioner Scales. I'm sorry.
What about, where you have this definition of manufactured home? Where is that?
It's in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. And in our document that we're working on today, it says, a manufactured home is not considered a manufactured home as defined in here. Just add that.
Okay.
And that should solve the problem because that will direct you to go here to see what a manufactured home is. Or what's the, what's our definition of a manufactured home? And that ties the two, that's the bridge that ties the two together.
Looking at the state definition and state statute, and it appears that we've taken the state-defined mobile home and made that, use that as the definition for manufactured home. And that may be part of the distinction that, it may need some clarification at some point. But like, our, the part about in sections on a chassis is pretty consistent with, with what's in state statute in the State Housing Development Authority Act 066. So, that, just a thought, that we may want to redefine, even if it's relabel, and then either not have a manufactured home defined... have a manufactured home definition or redefine manufactured home. But I'm not sure that that's germane to what we're talking about in our, in the code that we're talking about now, but as an aside.
Yeah, certainly, Commissioner Skills' suggestion will force that issue at some point down the road as we get into that discussion.
Sure. That's easy. We can have that language, sure.
Overall, nitpicky.
That person wasn't nitpicky.
I think my fellow commissioners at Broughton, we've discussed this a little before in prior review of this ordinance and some others, but the document that come, came in the packet has several sections. And for me, they each show changes from existing ordinance in different manners. And I'm familiar with most of them, so it's okay. You know, whole page, one change, I can, but if then another section is highlighting and doing things that have been added and others, it doesn't seem to be any tracking of changes for the public, then for a formal motion, that version we passed, anybody should be able to look and see, this is what you have now and this is what's being proposed to.
Sure. You'll, you'll have, you'll have two versions. You'll have a red line version. You'll have a clean version and we'll have a resolution.
Sure.
Yeah.
Other comments? Questions? Concerns? Yes, sir.
I have a question about the manufactured home label. So if we wanted, if there was a, how would we go about changing a label like that in the ordinance?
I would be careful because manufactured house, like, there's a mobile, there's a manufactured housing commission in Michigan, like, like, that's a pretty regulated type of housing. And again, you know, a manufactured, we don't have any pro, whatever anything you're saying, you can't build a, put a manufactured housing, manufactured house in a lot. There might be homeowner restrictions on some of the neighborhoods, but, you know, just take a piece of property out in the township. A manufactured house can hold a family. It's going to be several hundred square feet in size. This is not what this is intended to be. This limits two people, period, in the, in the ADU. This is not supposed to rise to the level of a second residence on a lot. It's a place where somebody is cohabitating. It's a mother who isn't ready, you know, you don't want to put her in a home, but she needs to be close. She wants her independence. It's a, it's a son who's back from college waiting to get going, something like that. That's what, those are the calls we get. Those are the kinds of calls we get. My mom needs a place to stay. Can I turn my loft and my garage into a unit? And we have to answer no. This lets us answer yes.
Are we not covering the issues of manufactured home by limiting the size that can be built? And we could just say, because you're not going to get a family-sized manufactured home and just say that any facility, whether manufactured on-site or not, has to have a permanent foundation?
You, you, well, to your first point, you do have, an ADU shall not be larger than six hundred square feet.
Well, I understand that, but does that cover the issue of manufactured homes? As long as it's got a permanently fixed foundation, is there something different about a manufactured home on six hundred square feet or whatever it is than a stick-built home? Is there a reason to change or to differentiate? I'm asking because I don't know. I agree, we don't necessarily want a trailer moving in the back of a person's house and sitting on its wheels as an ADU. And if it's a structure that's built, wheeled in, as someone described, put down on a fixed foundation, hooked up to the sewer and electric of the house.
Let me ask the question.
Okay.
Let me see where we fall on that. A six hundred square foot manufactured house is awfully small, but.
It may never exist.
Yeah.
And it probably doesn't because the size makes it non-profitable. But this clearly would cover the situation with a tiny house that comes in on a trailer and gets dropped onto a permanent slab or whatever and attached.
Let me, let me look into it.
Would you rather RV, sit in?
No, no. It's, it's, it's on wheels. It's movable. We wouldn't let you live in a RV in the backyard.
It's still a bit tricky. It looks a lot like a barn. I mean, what if it's a school bus that's actually habitable?
No.
Wild cons. Just take the wheels off, set it down. It's just decorative.
Nope.
It's going up in your neighborhood.
Yeah, and these, these should not be overly obtrusive. These should be, they should fit into the fabric of the, of the community. It's like a home business. You should not know a home business is going on inside of a home, right? You should, like, in theory, you shouldn't know that there's an ADU on the, on the property either. You, I mean, you don't even get an extra parking place.
Right. Yes.
I think practically, if I understood it right, that the structure has to meet the setbacks and everything. These are going to end up on larger lots. They're not going to be ending up on smaller residential lots. So that's, I think, where you're going to see these. And meets and bounds lots are, you know, acres or acre. That's where you're going to see these as opposed to even an eighty-foot wide lot. I mean, try to position this and put it somewhere where, I just think that typically it's going to be on a bigger lot. I mean, just for, just thinking purposes in terms of how is this going to be implemented? I think that it's most likely, not necessarily has to be, but most likely on a larger lot.
You're right. Yeah. We kind of see it the same way. I mean, a detached, a detached ADU has, you know, detached structure setbacks they have to, you know, meet, but on a smaller lot, like up around the lake, that's going, that's still, it's problematic to build a shed in the first place.
Yes, sir.
What if there's, that's kind of a crazy question, but like, you have a housing association that says the lots have to be what they are, the house. Even if you have like a three and a half acre lot, you can't build another, you know?
Oh, then HOA would take precedence. Yep. If an HOA says you can't do an ADU, we can write all the ordinances in the world that you don't get to do an ADU.
It's crazy, HOAs.
Anyone else? What would you like from us tonight, Mr. Dorky?
Um, I don't need anything. You typically do the straw vote thing. I have some questions to go look into. What if you find a six hundred square foot manufactured home? I would say under this scenario, you'd need a variance from the definition of a manufactured home to do that. The, on the owner occupancy requirement, we'll look into the possibility of just going by rental, you know, say only, I think that's probably not a bad thing to insert anyway, even if we don't make it part of the owner occupancy requirement. Yeah, only one rental license on the property sounds like a, that might be a good idea because, again, we're trying to get, we don't want to see two rental units on one lot. We can look into asking some professionals about it and got the typo on the review process. And, yeah, if you want to straw vote, that's fine, but.
Good question after you read through that. Why don't we want more than one unit on a lot?
It's very typical in a single-family, a single-family residential district, you, this ordinance says one principal structure.
Yeah.
You, it's, so an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, you get one principal structure on a single-family unit, on a single-family residence.
Well, I know that we, I know it's, so I understand that it's standard in a single-family residential area, but based on our housing needs, why is, why do we not want more than one residential dwelling unit?
If you're building more than one unit on a lot, that requires a rezoning to a multiple family district. This is a single, this, this is intended to alleviate that affordability. This is a solution, not the solution toward that.
Yeah.
You know, but you don't, yeah, we don't allow two principal structures on, on a single lot.
So I just have one last comment and then I'll, well, maybe not. But, um, so I, I, I understand that. The thing that I keep thinking about in relation to this is that it's, it's sort of, sounds like a way to let sort of higher-income folks up, sort of increase their property value at some level, but then it restricts other property owners who may not be able to afford things like that. And so what I'm worried about, not that I think this is necessarily going to happen, but what I think one of the risks might be is that it creates more property disparity. If we had a bunch of houses that had ADUs attached to them, and then it just creates more of a gap in, in residences that are attainable by the local population.
I think that's a different discussion. I think it more looks at changing all of the zoning laws as far as residential properties, setbacks, minimum size, and things like that. And I don't know that that's what's before us right now. That may be something that the township wants to look into as far as modifying those and making it more flexible for smaller homes or multiple homes on a piece of property, but we're not there at this point.
Well, I, I, I think that you, I see what you're saying. I also think this is part of this redevelopment-ready communities program. And so they're related. It may not be before us directly, but I do think they're related. And, and we have other things in here about like eliminating the minimum house unit size. Those all relate to this kind of issue.
This, this, this exercise began when we started looking at what we have to do to recertify our redevelopment-ready certification.
Sure.
Status with the, with the state. That is true.
Yeah.
That is true.
It just got to be.
I'm not saying these aren't necessary amendments, but the ADU thing, particularly, you know, earlier when we, we presented the affordable housing study that we put together, one of the things that came out of that was a potential solution to affordable housing issues is the construction of ADUs. We've seen that in other communities work successfully. Because you've got, you know, baby boomers who want to age in place, again, you know, I've, my, I've got a friend who's in a home in northern Michigan and it's $4,000 a month and that's a bargain. You know, this lets, you keep that loved one close with their independence, but still close by in case something happens. And that's one of the points of this. I do hear your concern if, you know, but again, the calls we're getting are, we're not, I'm not getting a lot of calls asking, can I build something in the backyard? I am getting people asking, can we put trailers in the backyard and run extension cords? And no, you can't. But I'm getting people asking, can I convert the loft? Can I, can I add a, can I build onto the house? That, I'm, I'm getting those calls. And, yeah, you can build onto the house, but you can't build it as a, as a, as a second dwelling, as an accessory dwelling unit.
So I'm really, this, so I'm really curious about those calls, actually. So for those calls, so you get, do we track those calls?
No.
I'm curious who the, where the people live are, who the people are and where they live who are calling to add trailers versus those who are calling to add.
No idea. No idea.
Yeah. No, I, I, I get that. I'm just, I'm, I'm just thinking about what kind of neighborhoods people would be from if they were calling about things like that.
To, to play devil's advocate just a little bit on this, one of the ways I've seen ADUs used in other communities, bigger cities, is to be a little bit of an income for the property owner so that somebody who maybe wants to buy a house in this community because it's a great community to live in, but can't necessarily afford the standalone mortgage, can do a little bit of modification, create an ADU and bring in a little bit of income through the rental of that space and thereby also create somewhat affordable housing for the people who are using it. So I, I think it's uncertain to me how it's going to happen, but I could see it going perhaps in the opposite direction of what you're proposing or what you're suggesting too. So I think it, it really is going to depend, we're going to have to see, like, where do these fit? We have a lot of neighborhoods with HOAs that I don't think will allow it, even if somebody wanted to. And those are usually, I would think, the higher-income neighborhoods. So I think it is more likely to be in the infill in an older house in a neighborhood that's not part of an HOA. So I, I don't know. I, I was initially, when we talked about this several years ago, kind of skeptical because there's just so much newness to this that we don't really know about. But I'm, I'm also, I mean, as I've heard it described and kind of thinking about the thoughtful way I think you've put it together, I, I'm much more comfortable with it than I was a couple of years ago. And I'd like to see how it, how it plays out and what the demand really is and what happens. And I think with the understanding that, boy, if this goes a little crazy or we run into situations that we weren't anticipating, that we have a promise to ourselves to revisit it or whatever.
Sure, sure. This is, this is a zoning ordinance. We could always, we're amending it once, we could always amend it again. That's a valid point.
But I think, I think you've put some thoughtful things in it. It sounds like when you talked about this before, that you're kind of basing this on sort of standard practice in other, other communities.
Yeah, we did, we did a lot of research on other communities. I didn't do that, so please don't ask me which communities we looked at, but I know we, I know the department did look into what other communities were doing.
So I, I appreciate your concern, but I, I also think it could potentially go a different direction too. So I'm, I'm less worried, I think, and I hope I'm right. I, I hope your fears don't come true.
Just real quick, I, I was going to say similar to Commissioner said here. If I'm not mistaken, Lansing has the same type of ordinance.
Okay.
If I'm not mistaken, because I will see house and then, and tell me if it's the same thing where the house is, let's just say the address is 147 and then you have 147 and a half. Is that the same type of thing, different entrance?
That might actually be operating as a duplex.
Yeah.
It's, it's a similar idea, right? You've, you've got a house. Yeah, you see this a lot in the, in the college areas. You've got a house and.
Like, it's a house, it's a standalone home and it looks like a standalone house, but then there's like an entrance on the side and maybe, because I did census, when was that, like fifteen years ago, whenever, twenty, 2010?
Right.
So, and, and it would be someone's relative that lives in the half address.
In, maybe, but it might be, it might be owned by a third party. And that's, that's a difference. This wouldn't let you do this. That might be owned by a third party and both halves of that house rented.
Okay.
This wouldn't let you do that. Also, you wouldn't get the whole floor. This inside or outside, this limits you to six hundred square feet.
Got you.
So it shouldn't be a separate address.
Got you.
This is not a primary structure. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no. And I was just going to say, and along with that, but thanks for clarifying that part. But along with that, HOA is here, and that's why I asked that question before, just because in the two neighborhoods that I've lived in, HOA is probably wouldn't allow for.
Sure.
What you were saying, Commissioner Brooks, in terms of the, because it'll, it'll just be crowded, yeah, like all these different things on one parcel.
Yep.
Anyway.
Commissioner Skills, did I see your hand up?
You did, but I think I heard the answer to my question. What I was going to speak about was, I agree with this from a critical viewpoint. Living in a neighborhood, I want to make sure that we don't make some changes that cause someone to move into a neighborhood and now they don't want to live there because of the changes that were. that we're making. So, I was just concerned about that.
Sure.
No, that was such a good point, I, I lost my thread, I'm sorry. No, it had to do with the addresses.
Yeah.
Commissioner Curtis was making the point about separate addresses, and you're saying this is not a principal residence, so they have to share, does the post office?
Yeah, the, yeah, would go to, would be a single, would be a single address.
So, anybody living in the accessory dwelling, and it has to change their postal address to the person whose house they're in the accessory...
Correct, correct, correct. There's another scenario in this too. You know, we talked about the aging in place. It could be that the fan, the, the empty nesters are ready to downsize, they can go into the ADU and then rent the house to the young professional couple that can't get a mortgage yet. That scenario is possible under this.
We're done? Then I need to get the idea of what we were asking, Commissioner Shorty, to come back to us as far as a resolution, and we can do a straw poll, or you can express your interest one at a time. Would you like to do this? If we want to do a straw poll, then...
I think we've talked it through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Again, this is, this is subject to change, where anybody can change their mind before we vote on the final resolution. So, at this point, what is your feeling about this, Mr. Scales?
I am comfortable with what I see at this point.
And Commissioner McConnell?
Do you know, given Connor Shorty's summary of the things that they're going to address next time?
Right. I'm, I'm good with it.
Mr. Shrewsbury?
I support it as well.
Mr. Richards?
I support.
I support with Commissioner Scales making sure that we put the definition of manufactured homes...
Sure.
I support.
As do I. So, I think you have guidance from us to go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have that, your next meeting.
Item eight on our agenda tonight is unfinished business. We have none other business. I don't believe we have any reports and announcements. Do you have any reports from the Township Board?
I do not have any report.
We have liaison reports. It's been a quiet two weeks. Project updates.
I have an updated project report in your packet.
Right.
I will note that the, one of the three new applications is dropped off. They've withdrawn their application at the board level. Other than that, I, I'm going to let you know too, that in the next meeting or two, you're going to see a draft amendment to our Conservation District. We're looking at allowing administrative approval of small, like ten cubic yard floodplain. When, yeah, we're, we're getting a lot, we're getting some applications where disturbances, that's the word I'm looking for, thank you, that still require Eagle approval, they still require compensating cuts, things like that. There's a case, cases around the lake where that isn't the case anyway, but, but neither, neither here nor there, the point is, rather, right now, any floodplain disturbance triggers a special use permit, and we're getting people with four cubic yards of disturbance, and that's, yeah, we're, you know, we're, we're looking to address that.
You're getting inundated by the what line?
Oh, oh, do you like that? Well played.
Get that in minutes.
Is there an update on the sites across from Whole Foods that I think was initially going to be a Trader Joe's?
I have no further update over what I said pre, at the previous meeting. They have, the specialty grocery has pulled a building permit that would, allows them to proceed with building the, the shell, the structure. I don't have any further update on that at this time.
What would be their next processes with us?
To begin construction, to exercise their right under the building permit that's been issued.
So, they would have to come back before us?
No, no, they've gone through all our approvals. They're in the building process right now. They've, remember, they've put a foundation in.
Okay.
Yeah, they can, they...
They've put a foundation in, but then they expired.
The, the, the previous building permit had expired, they pulled another building permit. It's the same permit with a different name on it.
And that had not, that did not have to come before us?
No, it did not. It was not an amendment of the site plan or, or the variance even that was, because this has a variance for parking associated with it as well.
So, they were au, so they were then authorized to continue to build?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Now, let's get back to our agenda. Page eight, next, is public remarks. Still have no members of the public here, so we have no one for remarks. Commissioner comments, anybody? Anything to bring up? Yes, Commissioner Scales?
It's nice to see this building is open again.
So big.
It's true yet, but it is nice to see that the building is open again, and if the public's listening, the township's back in business at 5151 Marsh Road.
Mr. Shorty, has everybody moved back to the building yet, or are there still offices open in the 242?
As far as I'm aware, no, there's no more 242 offices. That was our building department. They, they couldn't get it, they, they got here right away.
I'm talking about the clerk and the treasurer?
Yeah, they're all back. I think all the engineering staff is back now too. I think we're all back.
Good. Any other board comments? We're open for adjournment.
I vote for adjournment.
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I've never heard of opposition to an adjournment.